I'd like to call to order the December 17th, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorasty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrebono?
Here.
Mr. Reslevich?
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act and JSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports and discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I please get a motion to convene to closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as well.
Okay, Linda, are there any other communications other than what's on the agenda?
There are none on the agenda, and that's it.
Okay. And, okay, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the Public Workshop and Executive Session Meetings on November 12th, 2018, and the regular public and executive session meetings from November 19th, 2018. Anybody have any questions or concerns about those? Oh, I'm sorry, can I get a, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or concerns, discussion, anything? No? Okay, seeing none, Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrebono?
Yes.
Mr. Reslevich?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us to the Student Representative Report. Hello, students.
Hi. Okay, so, um, for Irving, this Wednesday evening, Irving will be hosting the first Winter Family Craft Evening. Irving families are welcome to join for crafts, the story of Snowman at night, the movie Frosty the Snowman, cookies, and hot chocolate.
I want to go. Can other people go?
And then we'll have roughly 100 students.
We're still joking around. We've done it. Sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
We got all excited, crafts. Is there going to be cocoa?
We're the worst.
We're the best.
Okay, yep, and then we'll have roughly 100 students signed up and hope to see you there, so I guess it's open. And our next Free Family Evening will be in the spring. Irving looks forward to our winter concerts and parties this week. The students have been working really hard with Ms. Rad-
Radke.
Sorry, 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 to prepare, and we're excited for the first day of winter and to wear pajamas to school as well. All of us at Irving would like to wish Dr. Taylor and the entire board a joyous and blessed holiday season. And then Bartle, the Bartle Student Council Wrap It Up Gift Event was today, and the award ceremony will be held on Wednesday, and Bartle's winter concerts are coming up this Thursday and Friday.
There's not much news for the high school since last week, but students, students had class meetings on Friday. Mr. Lassiter is also working on a student congress to make an, working with student congress to make an advisory board for the high school called Student Senate. Friday is a half-day followed by winter break, and NHS is holding a pastry-making event for the holidays, which anyone can come and buy a pastry.
Nice.
I, I had news from the middle school, I don't know if you all heard, it just happened tonight, their first win, girls' middle school basketball.
Woo-hoo!
Forty-seven to twenty-five against, against Kanakamak, I think it's Edison.
All right.
Yeah, it's not Edison. Okay, sorry about that, it was Kanakamak School, I'm not sure. But yeah, that was huge, so.
And hard to pronounce.
Very nice.
Know anybody on that team?
I do.
And as for the Wi-Fi topic, I don't know if there's a specific agenda item, or should we address it here, or?
I think it would be best addressed in old business if the board president is accept, okay with that.
Sure, and I mean, we're going to talk, I think there was a little discussion about technology somewhere else as well, right?
Uh, yeah, you could also bring it up at the tail end of my presentation by technology access. Did you have a chance? I, I was hoping that if anybody had questions about the diagram that I sent, I would have received an email.
Oh, I'm sorry, so I sort of like, I'm not-
Well, hold, hold that thought, we'll get to it while I do my presentation, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we will move on to your presentation, speaking of your presentation.
So tonight, we were supposed to have a high school student spotlighted, but he is actually on the first day of a new job, right now. So unfortunately, he can't make it tonight, but we have invited him to join us in January, so January 28th, we'll probably have either two spotlights, or I'll decide to move one to February. So instead, we're going to move straight to Ms. McNally's presentation. I'm going to swing around to the projector and turn it on, I'll just ask Ann Darcy to probably sit on the benches, so you don't get melted by the laser. I've asked Megan to come out, since she is now in her fourth or fifth month as the permanent principal, maybe it's more than that.
I think I've lost count, honestly.
So it's about time that she share a state, of the state for Irving, and talk a little bit about some of the initiatives that she's already brought to the program. So Ms. McNally, give the projector like 30 more seconds or so-
You got it.
-to warm up. You're on. There you go.
There it is. All right, I'll start. First, thank you for having me, I'm very excited, because the day today, that's why when you asked me how long I've been there for, I had to actually think about it, because every day is a new day. We just keep going, and we have so much going on at Irving all the time, and I'm, I'm actually very excited to be here and share it with you. And if you'd like to come to Craft Night on Wednesday, please do, we're very excited. Yeah. All right, so, the biggest piece of Irving that I, that I think all of you know, you know when you walk into Irving, it's, it's warm, the sense of community there is very important to all of us, the teachers, myself, the students, and it's important that we know each other, and we're able to put a face to a name. So when you first walk into Irving, this has been a wall of progress, I must say. We started this probably almost a year ago, January, and we've been growing and adding to it, and the entire staff of the building has created a frame, has a picture, and it's nice when families come in because they're able to see the staff, and they're able to, again, make that connection to who we are at Irving. Another piece of what we do is with the staff and building that sense of community, it's important that we all realize what piece of the puzzle we bring to the school as a whole, and we spend a lot of time talking about not just what intrinsically motivates us as a faculty and staff, but really what brings us together and what piece of the puzzle we're able to offer to the school. Examples of that could be creative, it could be people that are more extroverted or introverted, and really what we're able to offer one another. Another piece of what we do, we have Irving Rockstars every single month. Again, these are members of our faculty and staff that go above and beyond, and they nominate one another. So they're able to fill out a Google form, and I randomly select a couple each month, and the accolades are on the board for the entire month. So that's something everybody seems to look forward to. But again, again, it's that piece of community that we have first built with our faculty and staff, and then it goes out to the students as well. Right now, our current enrollment as of today, it actually changed today, we received a few more, so 313, pre-K is pretty much standing steady as to where we were last year, even the ECPA report last year, I think we were at 62, so we're really in the same spot we were last year. And that encompasses all of our preschoolers, it's not just our special education students, but it's a mix of the special education students with our regular ed students as well. Kindergarten, 116, and first grade, obviously, 124. But what's interesting is, we're receiving transfers quite often. We have 21 as of today, but nine have transferred out as of today, and we also expect our enrollment to probably increase a little bit come January, it generally does. We are seeing a huge growth in our ESL population, right, I mean, you can see just by the totals how many we have, so it's growing exponentially, and actually, three of our new enrollments in the last month were ESL, are, you know, ESL students. Our school-wide theme is kindness for the year, and that little quote on the side, be the reason someone smiles today, that really takes us through the crux of what we are doing throughout the school year. It's really that whole notion of how we can be kind to each other, how we can treat people, our peers, and how we can all get along. And in our morning announcements each day, that is reminded to the students, and it actually goes through our whole school meetings, our morning meetings, it's all over the school, on all of the doors, and the kids really, I had one little boy actually say that to me today, I was running around, something had happened in the building, and he said, "Remember, you need to smile today." I said, "You got it, you got it." So again, we have the whole school-wide theme of kindness, and if you've been at Irving, you walk in and we have a kindness tree, which I'll show you in a moment, it's right in the main entrance, Mr. Marco erected it, it looks beautiful, and what we do with that, each month, we have different shapes, and on those shapes are acts of kindness that the teachers and/or the paraprofessionals or any of our staff gives to the students, it could be for doing something kind or nice to their peers, et cetera. And with those pieces, they're hung on the tree, and the kids are also mentioned at our whole school meeting that we have every single month, they're able to stand, we're able to clap for them, and again, they're able to look at the tree, and we have pieces of the tree from September, October, November, and Decembers are starting to get hung now, so. Our whole school monthly meeting themes, they're all based around the theme of kindness and our curriculum focus for the month. For instance, the month of November, we focused on friendship and how we can care for others to kind of go along with Thanksgiving. Uh, I talked about the next one. We have a chain of kindness that hangs, with that, each family received a slip of paper in their welcome letters from me over the summer, and they were asked to, first, we had sent a story home and asked that the parents talk about what it means to be kind to others, how we can be a good friend, and what the kids did on each link of their chain was to respond to a sentence starter that was on there. "I can be kind in school," bye, "I can be a good friend," bye, and it was, again, just that sense of community. The chain of kindness, it has grown, and it's around our school as well. Our Rockstar staff I mentioned already, and our morning announcements, for the first half of the school year, I generally do them, Dr. Taylor's also done them. Apparently, the kids love when he does them, so. But for the second half of the year, the first graders will be doing our morning announcements. And part of the announcements is really getting the kids comfortable with speaking, they're also able to add a fun adjective at the end of their morning announcements, and again, they close it with our school-wide theme of be the reason someone smiles today. There's the tree, it looks like there's a glare on it, but again, it's all the, those are the leaves of the tree. And we also have how to be kind, this particular board focuses on whatever the guidance counselor is going over with the children for the month. So for the last month, it was to give personal space, and they read a story about how, you know, we need to give each other personal space, and how we can talk to our friends and be kind. A couple of things that were addressed this school year since I've started, I'll go into that a little bit with you, the code of conduct, I mean, that was an entire group effort, obviously, so that has been put to use a few times, but I must report, so far, so good with the, with the code of conduct. I'm finding that it's, it's reflective in what we do from day to day at Irving, and it's also reflective of the age categories as well. Unstructured play, I think this has to be my favorite one, I will be honest. We are offering the children 30 minutes of unstructured play every single day, it's built into their schedules, it, when I did the scheduling, it kind of butts up to an hour and a half block, whether that be math or the ELA block, and the kids just love it, the teachers love it, but that unstructured aspect, we're working with the staff to really understand the difference between facilitated play and unstructured play, and what the difference is. So we are offering a workshop series, which I will get into, into with you in a little while. Lunch and recess switches, in order for the kids to really get to know other kids in their grade, because we have six classes for kindergarten and first grade, they will be switching lunch and recesses for the month, I think it's starting in Feb, February. So the classes, some of, we have an A-B schedule, and the classes will be switching so they can have lunch and recess with their peers. And again, that is just a strategy for A, making new friends, but it also helps with the playground and behavior. We have a new traffic pattern and a new drop-off time, we've extended the drop-off time at Irving from 8:00 to 8:10, to allow, A, because of, for staffing, but it's also for the safety of all of the children, just to make sure that we have enough supervision, and so far, that has worked beautifully. We also have para-meetings this year, what that is, I meet with all of the paraprofessionals in the building, because I almost have as many as teachers, and it's important to me that we, it's that sense of community again, I want them to feel like they're part of the building as much as the teachers are. They have PLC time and common planning time and faculty meetings, the paras do not. So those meetings offer an opportunity for me to kind of catch up with them, and them to catch up with me, and we go over safety and whatever other things need to be on the agenda for that day. All right, so, as part of our strategic plan, Goal Two, our PLCs this year are really focused on culturally responsive teaching, and these are a couple snapshots of what we're doing during our PLC time. Our staff was grouped according, they took a personality test, it was an animal personality test, actually, and I purposefully mixed them all up to be with people that weren't like them on purpose. So some of what's coming out of PLCs right now, it really has to do with culturally competent teaching, and really how we can kind of work together to understand each other and culture, and how we're infusing that into daily teaching. So the final goal of this will be their presentations, and each of the groups focused on a different area of culturally competent teaching. Programs that we currently have, that we are still using and love, we, the responsive classroom model in our whole school meeting, so out of our responsive classroom, that's that community-based building community within the classroom, it's that common language within our school. Our readers and writers workshop models are still going strong, actually, the teachers have been receiving PD in that area, we had one of our teachers recently present on guided reading practices, we also have our friend Eric, who comes in quarterly to work on different facets of the readers and writers workshop model, and that really is teacher-driven through what's coming out of common planning and what the needs of the teachers are. Our math workshop model is going well, the teachers are attending Conquer Math with Dr. Nikosia, and I had the pleasure of being able to go in last week, which was fantastic, because you really can see how much goes into children using manipulatives and learning through hands-on experiences, and really how you can scaffold questioning and how you can reach learners at any level. It's wonderful, and the teachers have responded to it so well, so thank you for allowing everybody to go. Our Rising Stars Intervention Program is still in full effect, this is for reading, writing, and math, and the teachers, again, are receiving the ongoing support and workshop guidance as needed. One of my favorites, outside of the community piece, are all of our social-emotional learning opportunities that we have at Irving. As you can see, our guidance counselor in that picture was providing a lesson to the students and their feelings, and how to kind of control your feelings, but how to understand how people are feeling. So she does monthly lessons with each class, our whole school meetings provide an opportunity for the students to really take part, to have a voice, we do a greeting, we do a share, we have a birthday share, one of the chosen classes does an activity for the month, so it's really offering the kids an opportunity to shine. We also have Reading with Zuma, everybody's favorite dog, she comes once a week, we have morning meeting and community building every day, from roughly 8:45 to 9:15, or 9:00 to 9:30, depending on the class, because of breakfast. And our counselor spends a lot of time having lunch, she orchestrates lunch bunches, I believe, every Thursday, and she has various social groups that are teacher-recommended, and we also have the bunny bench outside. Our Rising Stars program, I kind of wanted to go back to this just a little bit, for those of you that may not be familiar with this program, Rising Stars really is the pull-out intervention program for reading, writing, and math, and on average, the beauty of this program right now is that the students really are receiving an extra 45 minutes of support, roughly three times a week, and in some cases, four times a week. Sometimes the teachers will push into the classrooms and work with all of the students, it really just depends on student need, and it's wonderful, because it's actually providing a second voice to any children that might need to go through the Intervention and Referral Services Committee. And again, it's teacher discretion from, for continuation, it's student need, we're there to help the students. Some of the new programs for this year, obviously, the Unstructured Play Initiative, I talked a little bit about this before to you, and the workshop series, the mandatory attendance, that is part of the building-level five hours that we choose for the staff, and with this, the staff is attending two mandatory workshops, they're an hour long, and they're being run by the teachers that did the training over the summer, so it's a turn, it's turnkey. And we are also going to be instituting school-wide play days come the spring, I believe we're going to try to do them monthly, but we just wanted to get the structure and routine in the classrooms before doing something such as this. Again, Reading with Zuma, she comes in once a week, the K-1 classes thoroughly enjoy seeing her, and the kids also get to read with me three times a year. Most recently, I went into every single one of the classrooms before Thanksgiving and shared a story and did an activity with the kids. Some of our preschoolers playing with magnet tiles that they love, and that's when I went into one of the classrooms, and we read Turkey Trouble, Disguising a Turkey. These are a couple of things that went on in the fall, we had our pumpkin patch, we had Ms. Zara doing her square dancing, which is always fun, and we had Ms. Vargas reading a story, and the last one is the first time Zuma came to visit, and she was very tiny. Now her feet are really good, a little pause. Our Breakfast After the Bell program, it, we roughly serve about a third of our population, and it's interesting, because we serve 97 as of today, but again, that fluctuates, because some students, especially the paying students, have the opportunity to, to choose if they're having breakfast, but it's on a steady increase, and I'm finding that parents that register, they're all signing up for Breakfast After the Bell, love the program, it's wonderful, we've made it work beautifully, and the kids love having breakfast at school. And I'm also finding that it's really helping us with tardiness in the morning, because the kids expect, they want to be in their classrooms, to eat breakfast with their peers, they are not eating by themselves. So, yeah, I must say, it's a wonderful program. Our continued partnerships at Irving, our Rutgers GSE, we're really enjoying having the student teachers, we have six of them in the building right now, we're going to miss them dearly. The Rutgers Seeing Eye Dogs, which can be seen in the picture, Dr. Taylor is actually there the day they came. So they come and they do a presentation for us twice during the school year, and the kids really, really, really love it. We will be working again with George Street in the spring, I have, we're actually, the program that the kids are going to be working on, it's going to be unstructured play base this year, in addition to the theatrics and the music, so we're still kind of in the planning stages of how it's, the George Street Playhouse is, you know, how that's going to look, the internship is going to look this year. We also welcome our high school Glow students two times a week, I have one working in the building right now, who comes three days a week, three half-days a week, and then we have the other students come, and they do various tasks around the school, they're in the classroom, they work in the office a little bit, so it's really been a great experience with them. Our new partnerships for right now, we have, from the Rutgers Graduate School of Applied and Professional Psychology, we have behaviorists working with some of our teachers and paraprofessionals as part of a research study right now, so they're coming in and working in three different classrooms with three different sets of teachers and paraprofessionals. So they're coming in and observing and providing coaching, so far, I've only heard a positive response, we're only a month in. Lastly, we also have had a few of Dr. Elias's interns with us, they've been coming in to observe our responsive classroom model, and they've also been coming to our climate meetings, and I'm expecting them on Wednesday night for our Winter Family Craft Night. So on the horizon for Irving, these are a couple of the ideas that have been going through my mind, and just taking the months that I've been there and kind of swallowing and seeing what I would like to do as the principal of the building. Right now, for the springtime, I'm in the process of forming a whole school rules committee, we really want to take a look at our whole school rules and our logical consequences, and make sure that they're reflecting the responsive classroom model. Again, those expectations are developed at the beginning of the school year with the teachers for the classroom, but it's important that we're continually looking at them for the building, and because we have the new code of conduct, I think it's a perfect time for us to really look at our code of conduct, look at what's being done in the classrooms and through a responsive classroom, and coming up with whole school rules that are applicable at this point. Next, we're going to continue with our play-based measures going forth, the teachers are really, really interested in how we can continue to infuse unstructured play, whether that be block play, and they're very interested in taking a look at science and social studies, and really how we can put a larger play-based approach to those subject areas, and really get into the community. Another thing that we're doing with our first being on Wednesday are the family engagement evenings, quarterly, we would like to be, we're going to be doing these, and again, it's really just getting the families into the school. And right now, as we kind of stated before, we have 100 children coming on Wednesday, and I'm assuming there will probably be more that just did not sign up yet, but it, it really is a huge focus of mine and the staff, we want families to feel welcome, we want them to come into the buildings, and we really want them to feel part of the Irving family, and we know that we have a lot of working families, so I think for a good majority of them, these evenings are very, will be very beneficial. And again, it's not costing families anything either. I've been in discussion with Dr. Nikosia for next year of really focusing our media curriculum with STEM focus, really, in addition to book selection and the other important- with STEM focus, really, in addition to book selection and the other important skills that are taught within the media time, we really have been in discussion of how we can kind of see this come to fruition, kind of in the beginning planning stages. And then lastly, my final thought is the teaching of language, and possibly how we might be able to see that come back around again to our first graders. And that's something I've been doing my own research on, the benefits, and what surrounding districts are also doing. So, thank you all. Come to the end, and if you have any questions for me, please ask.
Ms. McNally, I just want to add one thing. First of all, thank you for a very comprehensive presentation.
Oh, you're so welcome.
I've been in your school frequently. I get in there almost every other day, and I try to make it to everybody's classrooms, and I talk to them informally, and the consensus is, the teachers have embraced your being there, and they really appreciate you. They really do. You're not only supporting them, but you're bringing a sense of levity that I think I'm feeling too when I walk into the building, so thank you. Any questions for Megan? Please, Mark?
Yes.
I actually have a long set of questions, so I apologize. Not a long set, but comprehensive set. So, what happened to the potential order for the play materials? We haven't seen that yet. Is that coming out of existing monies, or will something come to the committee, the finance committee?
For the supplies?
Yeah.
That'll have to come out of the existing operational budget.
And are we going to go forward with the exact, with the configurations that you proposed?
Yes, I gave you the spreadsheet of the configurations. It's broken down pretty comprehensively.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Oh, you're so welcome. You know, I said, I'd rather, we're going to do this right, so we would be super excited with anything.
But you are going forward with that list, and I just want to say that's...
Granted, I get the okay from the finance guy.
No, 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 I think you get the okay from the superintendent. So, it's coming out of current existing monies.
Yeah.
Great, fabulous. I just want to say for the board that if you toured the building, you'd see scant play material in many or most of the rooms, materials which disappeared just coincidentally about five or six years ago, and just don't lend the school to any kind of play-based curriculum. So, it's wonderful that you're doing that. You made me smile today with this presentation.
And I also very much enjoyed touring the building with your lovely wife.
Great.
We really had a wonderful dialogue.
Excellent. And I do, though, want to add, I have one more question, and I wanted to add a comment about the moving forward on a more of a play-based curriculum. The ESL students that you mentioned, are they a specific set of languages, or is it one language, multiple languages? What are you seeing?
We have 11 different languages total that we're seeing. So, when the children are pulled out for instruction, they're mixed languages.
So, my comment is about the play-based learning, play-based curriculum. So, I applaud that there is now an unstructured playtime every day. It's about time. Many boys, since I've been on the board, board members have talked about that, and as I say, it's about time. But if you look at the state, I have a lot of notes here. If you look at the state guidelines for, in particular kindergarten, that's the easy one to pick up, because in pre-K, there's much more play, and in first grade, there's perhaps not supposed to be as much play, but if you look at the kindergarten, they're talking about a model curriculum with 60 to 100 minutes of play per day, in addition to outdoor recess of 30 minutes, and it's just all integrated. And to read...
This is from the state?
This is from the state. I've passed this around to the curriculum committee numerous times. Dr. Taylor has gotten it, I think. Megan, you've gotten copies. And, you know, these are done, I think, for the most part, Rutgers professors of education put in, you know, much of the documentation on this. But if you look at the guidelines, one of the statements is, "Design kindergarten schedules, classroom spaces, materials, and daily plans to accommodate play. Ensure that play opportunities are ongoing to support children's development, and educate all staff and families about play is essential to the kindergarten experience." And then coupled with that are statements like, "At least 60 minutes of play in centers in addition to an extended outdoor play period. Choice time gives children an important opportunity to practice and cement the academic and social skills." So, I want to simply encourage you, and if that takes professional development, that would be wonderful, to put professional development into integrating play, but 30 minutes simply going forward, I think, is a good start, but it's not enough.
Right, and the one thing I will say, because our math and ELA blocks are an hour-and-a-half apiece a day, the teachers use center time for exactly that, too. Yes, the children are working toward the standards that they'd have to for the state, but they're also, they also have choice during that time, and the teachers are finding creative ways to infuse play into that hour-and-a-half, whether for math or ELA as well. And currently, the kids do have a half-hour recess period, and I do find that on nice days especially, the teachers will take them out for a second play as well.
I also would hope that the, that having the play materials moving...
Mark, just make sure you're using...
Yeah, having the play materials, oh, this is difficult. Having the play materials, having the play materials in the rooms now, or, do we know when we're ordering those materials?
I don't know. I mean, as soon as we get quotes, do we have quotes yet?
I'm always the most impatient person in any room that I'm sitting in.
It's a good thing to be impatient about getting...
We also have to take a look at the numbers. Linda's probably having, is cringing right now about the unbudgeted expenses, but we have to look at how much we want to spend on this fiscal year budget versus next year.
This is not, this is not a fortune. If one child is helped who doesn't have to go into, you know, out of district or something, this money has paid for itself 10 times over. But anyway, I hope that with that material coming in, with blocks coming in and other play materials, as per the state guidelines, this can be more inculcated into the program and become much more a part of the program, because it's just so much more beneficial for the children. So, I just want to make that case, and I know, I believe you're...
And I completely appreciate it.
I believe I'm not, I believe I'm probably preaching to the converted, but I want to make a strong case that we do this.
No, and I appreciate your support. I really do.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to ask about the curriculum. Is it creative curriculum that we're using? It is?
Yes, our pre-K classes are creative curriculum.
And kindergarten and first grade as well, or...
Kindergarten and first grade are doing the readers and writers workshop and the math workshop model.
Okay, so their unstructured playtime is their comprehensive playtime for the day besides recess, the kindergarten and the first grade?
Yes, yes, so they have that 30 minutes of unstructured play, plus their 30 minutes of recess, and again, each of their, the model for readers, writers, workshop, and math workshop, they have center choices.
Okay.
So, the teachers are really starting to get creative, and again, that's why we're having the Workshop Series, too. It's really kind of our teachers helping one another to kind of teach each other or give ideas and be a support system for one another. And I also find that the majority of the teachers, they co-plan, so they're really trying to come up with ideas that are cohesive for the entire grade level as well.
Right, so you're kind of facilitating more of a culture shift in the direction of play. That's what it looks like from the outside. Okay, and then I wanted to ask...
We still have standards that we have to cover.
I know.
But...
But, yeah, so my other question is, because you had my kids in middle school, I was wondering, and it's so cool that you're at Irving now, like, because you saw, you know, like, what was coming from Irving and Bartle, and now you're there, so how is that affecting your experience, and what are you...
You know, I almost feel like teaching middle school, it almost seems like eons ago. It really does. And I see them, and I'm like, oh my gosh, they're so big, and I have a middle schooler at home, too, so. But I'm saying, I feel like right now and where I'm at is where I'm supposed to, kind of where I'm supposed to be.
Yeah.
You know, and I look at the big picture of it, and I love the piece, the early childhood piece.
It's interesting to see you go from, you know, middle school is so different.
It's so different on so many levels.
I sense something, though. I've gotten to know Megan as a parent, as well as superintendent. I think you were so good at differentiating instruction and personalizing instruction for kids, and being flexible and rolling with them. I bet that that's playing now in the Irving setting, you know?
100%.
Like, you know that ease that I felt, I sensed?
Yeah.
That's the kind of ease I felt in her classroom.
That's what I was thinking, though, because it's not that Irving is easier, you know, sometimes the problems appear easier, right, because they're smaller, the children, but like, the idea that we had, our former principal was a person from early childhood, and you were from the world of middle school, and it just seems like philosophically, like you get early childhood in a way that, you know, we hadn't seen before. And so, it's just interesting. It's almost like it's something that you get or you don't get. You can't teach a person to get it. So, I'm just really grateful that you're there and that you get it, and I'm looking forward to lots of good playtime.
Thank you, and I thoroughly enjoy teaching your children, because I had a lot of your kids. Just about all of your kids, actually. Just about. No, I appreciate that, and kind of back to what Dr. Taylor said, I kind of agree. My time in the classroom, it really, and especially because I really spent a lot of time in the special education world, it really, that flexibility piece and that personalizing of instruction, we see that at early childhood. Everything is a case-by-case basis. Every family is a case-by-case basis. So, that's a big piece of my philosophical approach to early childhood.
Mine, too, so I very much appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
Awesome. Does anybody else have anything for...
I just was curious what the buddy bench is.
Oh, the buddy bench! If you look at our playground, it's a big blue bench, and it says buddy bench on it. What it is, is the philosophy behind the buddy bench is really that children are all seeking each other out and helping each other. It's the whole, it's a part of the anti-bullying, though we don't like to call it that, in early childhood, but it's really that notion that children, if they don't have anybody to play with, kids will actually go sit on the bench, people will run over the bench. That's the notion of what the buddy bench is. So, and we actually, each year, I know the principal before me, it's been there, and I know Bartle has one, too. So, we, at the beginning of the school year, at the whole-school meeting, we bring the buddy bench in, and we go over, you know, the importance of it and what it's there for, and how it's not there for punitive purposes. It's there for helping purposes.
Of course. You're welcome. Anybody else? No?
All right, well, thank you so much for coming, and I have one more thing I just wanted to add, which is, I'm so, so excited that you have a welcoming attitude towards parents in that school. I think of all of the things that you talked about, that's probably one of the things that excites me the most, and those four nights that you're planning to open up the school to parents are so important. If we don't get families feeling connected in those first, early, crucial years, it only gets harder as they get older and their kids get older, and they're, quite frankly, less cute. I mean, it's much easier when they're this cute to get...
It's also a cultural thing, too, like, to make sure that we're sending that message to people who come from cultures that don't automatically inject themselves into the school. The teacher is not the authority necessarily, it's a collaborative effort.
They're that goofy person you do crafts with at the holiday time.
And in another piece of what we do, too, especially even for something such as this, we send all of this home in various languages.
That's great.
So, I know that the translator piece is huge, and I know you can scan things and translate them, but we, but that's another piece of what I believe needs to go home to parents, because we have so many parents that simply do not speak English.
Right, so one piece I would love for you to think about adding to that is not, is either for one of those four nights, or potentially an additional night to be for prospective parents, parents who have kids even littler than Irving age, to get them in, find some kind of activity to do with them to get them engaged, because...
I love that. It would be a great introduction to preschool, too.
Exactly, you know, for, and I don't know how you reach those families, I don't know how you find those families.
The library.
You know, so, but to get those families into Irving and let them know, this is where you're going to be coming, this is where we want you to be, and we can't wait till, you know, you're an Irving dragon.
Right, and we also, our registration, I was actually working on the packet today with the secretaries, it's going out pretty soon, and I think a big piece of it is to getting the parents in relatively early. We've been talking about making earlier dates, because we would love to even invite parents in for something such as that, in addition to the day they come to observe, because they all have friends.
Right.
And they all know people who know people.
Right. Yeah, exactly. If you just put that out to your current parents, you, you know, hook in a bunch of parents who've got kids who might be coming into pre-K in a year or two years or whatever, but it gives them an opportunity to come into the building and get the lay of the land, and for the kids to come in and know where they're going, and, you know, it just makes it feel like more of a part of the community.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Thanks for having me. And happy holidays to everybody, really. Enjoy your time.
I'm going to send Ms. McNally home, so she can be on the line at 8:10. Reading and meeting. Thank you, Ms. McNally.
Thank you.
I'm going to shift gears, so I will ask that Anna and Darcy, if you want to come back to the bench, you do, or you can just turn around, whatever floats your boat. The discussion that the full board has had about technology over the last couple of years is peaking. It's accelerated in the last couple of months, and in the last week, there've been a flurry of emails, texts between me and members, particularly at the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee has taken the lead, in my view, to address the technology access gap that we know exists in the community. So, I administered a survey that I would like to talk about in the next few minutes. I'm going to begin by showing you the responsiveness rate, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the data itself, and then I'll conclude by sharing some suggestions for consideration, and then I'm going to have Mark Krieger, who's the Finance Chair, and also a member of the Policy Committee, pick it up and talk more about those suggestions. So, I first need to make sure that the community watching at the board meeting and the full board recognizes really the two problems that currently exist. The reality is, we have a good number of kids, families, who do not have the opportunity to do the same engaging work as their peers, who do have the technology that they would need to engage in some of the, particularly homework assignments that we've been administering at home, and we haven't addressed that gap for years and years, and the reason why it needs to be addressed sooner than later is because as technology becomes more pervasive and more widely used in our school, so does that gap become more noticeable. I have an article I'll be distributing to the board in paper form when I sit down. You know, my own very preliminary research on the web about this issue proves that it's not just our problem, it's a problem that's nationwide. The article from the New York Times that I'll share talks about kids who are having to park themselves outside of schools where they can access Wi-Fi using their smartphones, as you can see in this picture, just so they can complete some of the homework assignments that their peers can do at home on desktops and laptops. Edutopia, the George Lucas Foundation, Education Foundation, has a whole series of articles all about this topic, and I really appreciate this particular passage from an Edutopia piece I recently wrote, so just give that a read real quick. So, my survey that I had the Irving and Bartle kids take home with them, all paper format, nothing was electronic, and that I had the middle and high school students complete in school showed these responsiveness rates, which are no surprise. I mean, I do think, I'm actually relatively pleased by the 34% responsiveness rates. They're higher than the 20% average responsiveness rates people get from surveys, and obviously the fact that three-quarters of our students completed the surveys, the middle and high school, is no surprise, because they were doing it, they were completing them during this school day. And here are some of the results that we found. In total... In total, based on the respondents, responses we received, we determined right now that three students total don't have any devices at all, NOCs, Kindles, smartphones, desktop computers, laptop computers. I'm going to share the raw data with the board as well. You'll see a breakdown, school by school. By the way, this is one of the most comprehensive surveys I think we've administered in recent years. Every year, we do ask parents, guardians, to tell us if they would rather receive communicated by email versus paper, but we've never taken a deep dive into what they actually have. And as you can see, 30 students total said that they didn't have any internet access. The Policy Committee took the lead on this issue, because we were looking at the current board homework policy and considered adding language that would help us provide more opportunities for kids who, who don't have any ability to complete some of the homework assignments that their peers were completing to do so. And that led some members of the Policy Committee to prompt me to take a much closer look at the data for just the high school. The idea being that the Irving and Bartle kids are not being assigned, for the most part, and that they are, I'd be surprised if it's happening, maybe it's happening in fifth grade, technology-based homework. There is an issue more so at the middle and high school, but to me, the high school, having been a high school principal and a high school teacher, I can speak from experience. The high school teachers rely heavily on technology, whether it's having kids write multi-page essays, use Google Classroom, do research on the Internet on technology to support their work at home. So we took a much closer look at the high school data, and this is, I must correct this information, I did not do that. The actual number of students who we determined don't have any desktop or laptop computers is actually 52, not 67. Now be mindful that we're talking about 347 responses, now three quarters of the student body responded, 52, not 67. My mistake. Do not have desktop or laptop computers. We still haven't heard back from 100 students. Of these students who don't have any desktop or laptop computers, 28 have Kindles or NOCs, 218 of them have smartphones. When I looked more closely at the 52 students who didn't have desktops and laptops, I was able to determine the following data. I'm not going to read the slide, you can read it yourself. Now, I've gone back and forth with the members of the committee about the functionality of smartphones. I have a hunch, the vast majority of the homework that we're assigning, especially at the high school level, cannot be completed if it's technology-based on a smartphone. It's almost impossible. I think the students present would tell me this, too, to write an essay on an iPhone or a Droid. So the next step for the committee was to think about ways we could address this problem. The reality is, we have not been able to fund our technology budget because of the fiscal constraints our district has faced. So we don't have much to go around and loan, except for these four Chromebooks I'm listing on the screen and three access points that we use, thanks to our service with Verizon. The, the access points, by the way, they're referred to as MiFi's, it's a product name, would provide unlimited access to the Internet using the Verizon Cellular Network. We have three of those currently that will be available for loaning out. And these are some cost ideas as to, if we were to go ahead and actually buy enough equipment to, to provide loaners, you're talking about $280 a Chromebook and $38 per month for the service for MiFi. We've struggled for some time trying to determine how to bring the borough in to provide access, Internet access, contemplated reaching out to RUT groups to see if they can expand their network into the Cedar Lane apartment area, since it's so close to the Livingston campus, but we've hit dead ends in all cases. So before I have Mark take over, I'd like to throw out a couple of things that I've considered we need to do in the short term. First of all, I'd like to have a group, which I would call the District Central Leadership Team, come together to meet January 14th to tackle this issue. This would be a stakeholder group that would include members of the board, me, the president of the Highland Park Association, Keith Presti, at least four teachers, Dr. Cosia, Mr. Lassiter, principal of the high school, and potentially Ms. Hoffler, if, if we need her input because of financial matters. I anticipate January 3rd meeting with Keith to form this group, and then have our first meeting on January 14th, at which, on which day, I believe, we can come up with a short-term solution, which might be perhaps what, what Mark will consider, will suggest. It'll something that the committee will have to take up. We have been looking, as a group, about, as, as one short-term fix, expanding the hours we have available for the kids to come to the lab after school. I threw up some ballpark cost estimates, all pending HPEA agreement, but these are all contractual rates we would pay paraprofessionals. If we were to have paraprofessionals supervise the computer lab, which we have at the high school media center, I think that's the ideal place, we were to open up the lab, a lab for after-school homework, study time, because it's central, both middle and high school, and there are about 25 machines there. The times we would open up these, the lab for is something that Mark can, can share with the board. So Mark, at that point, at this point, do you want to take over?
Yeah, thank you.
And talk a little bit about your ideas?
Okay. So here's the thing. About six weeks ago, the Policy Committee started talking about the homework policy. This is in light of the equity issue, that we knew a large number of students did not have equipment and didn't have Wi-Fi access. The numbers that Scott put up for the high school are the numbers that we got. We have, I'll do this very briefly, and then I'll talk about some of the alternatives that the Policy Committee, under Anna's leadership, came up with. And actually, just to digress a minute, for the last week, there had been lots of emails and text messages running back and forth and back and forth. We've been going a little crazy with this. And I think it's because of the seriousness of the matter. One of our concerns is this doesn't just drag out, because there are students who cannot, clearly cannot do their work. Anyway, 52 students who answered out of around, round numbers, 350, don't have an appropriate device. They do not have a desktop, they do not have a laptop. Few of them have iPads, but an iPad without a keyboard is not as effective as it could be. But that's the, of the students who did answer. The 28% who didn't answer will also have a fair number of students who did not, who do not have appropriate equipment at home and/or Wi-Fi access. So running through those numbers, I'm estimating that 80 to 85 students don't have an appropriate device at home. I'm also expecting that the vast majority of those students, in cases where they have only a smartphone or an iPad, don't really have Wi-Fi access. They're very likely to have a 4G or something, but they're not likely to have Wi-Fi access. If you run through the costs of this for the high school alone, you're looking at, to buy loner equipment, just the equipment itself, for Chromebooks and Wi-Fi access points, you're talking about $25,000 or $30,000 for the Chromebooks, a similar amount for the, annually, for the Wi-Fi access points, although you may, we might be able to get that more cheaply. And then this doesn't take into account the middle school, so we're likely in the middle school talking about another 70, let's say $70,000. So we're talking about $150,000. Plus, we need staff to make sure those machines are in good working order, manage them, manage the sign-in and sign-out. It's complex and it's risky, and other schools have done this, and there are articles on failures. So I'm very, very leery of that at the moment. And we, that's only one of the things we talked about. Let's, let me just briefly say what we talked about. There were suggestions that no homework be allowed to be given out that requires technology, and that's just has to be unacceptable. I think to penalize the large majority of our students in the interest of equity is not the right approach. We have to do something for the students who don't have access. We talked two years ago about one-to-one loners. I mean, if we can't afford loners for the students who, who don't have equipment, it's absurd to talk about every student getting a loner, and that, that has even bigger implications. We talked about the loners, but those loners are, as I just said, are very, very, very expensive. And then we talked about allowing homework to be given out that requires technology, but with hard copy being made available anonymously, just on the desk, to students who, who want to just take it, for whatever reason. I don't have a computer at home, I don't feel like doing it on the computer, my computer is down, my Wi-Fi is down, I, I take that printed homework home. That's what's done in my grandkids' school in, in New York City. They, every, all the work is given out, there's middle school, work is given out, and then stuff is on the desk. I mean, I grilled my daughter about this, and I grilled my grandkids. They, they take, they can take hard copies with them. Anna, though, at our last meeting, came up with a suggestion, and Anna, you know, we talked about this ages ago, what you brought up was fantastic, but we kind of, at the time, poo-pooed it. Let's go on, let's do the next thing. But you came up with it, and it was great, and that is to open, open the school at, at other hours, including during the day, which I'm going to get to in a minute, so that this presentation doesn't go on for an hour. So the idea here would be to open the school after hours, in principle, I feel, and I've talked to Dr. Taylor about this, after the after-school activities. So at times, so that students could do after-school activities, come back to the school, pick a time, 5 o'clock, 5:30, I'm not in the schools, I'm not running the schools, but I think a time where, where it's available, have somebody in the school monitoring the computer lab and having it open for two hours, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, possibly even Friday, so that students can get access to computers after hours. There's the issue of the students who come from Cedar Lane area and are bused. My proposal for that would be to open the computer lab in Period 1 and have someone monitoring in Period 1. So students who are on the buses and are going to be coming to the school early in any event, which is when the buses arrive, have the students be able to use the computer lab then, and then perhaps have it available during the day in some study hours. And that, again, I'm not an expert in that, I don't know if we can even do that, but certainly Period 1 and after-hours. The cost of that is, is very, very minimal. Scott talked to me about someone after-hours, a few days a week, costing, for the rest of this year, under $2,000 in salary. That's what he presented. It solves the problem, which, which is that students can get access to a computer, be in the building, be able to use the machines, and there, I think, are sufficient machines here to, to cover the majority of the students, perhaps not every student every day, but I don't know that every student every day needs to access the equipment. I just don't know. If it's also open for first period, that may, and for some study periods, that may make it available enough for all the students. I don't see the budget, maybe we budget next year for loners. I just don't see it. It's too much money. It's, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Wait, so this is the part that's still, I'm still not wrapping my head around.
Right.
If we're talking, say, 100, or even, say, 75 Chromebooks
Chromebooks, right.
That we would need available.
Right.
That's not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
No, but, but if you, if you have 80 at the high school and 80 in the middle school, that's 160.
Is it 75 at each building?
Yes, yes, it is. Sorry if I wasn't clear. It's, at the high school, it's about 80, 85. And in the, in the middle school, unless we buy, no, even if we buy, between the Wi-Fi and the keyboards and the machines that people don't have, it's 80 or 85 machines.
Per building.
Per building.
Not, not for the lab?
The lab doesn't have that many.
No, to have loners.
To have loners.
So for a lab, how many, how many would you...
We have 25, maybe we bring carts in for more if the students come and use them.
So one thing I should add is that I had a chance to talk to Jennifer Sebier today about having Nikki Foringo, who's currently paid with Title I funds, to keep her room open after school twice a week for middle school students that want to do homework.
So can I, can I make a suggestion here? I think this stuff we have to hash out in this meeting with, yeah, I mean, I think I was doing it at the board table...
This is certainly very, no, this is preliminary. I'm not trying to make any decisions.
No, 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 I know.
I'm trying to say how damn complicated this is.
But I think, I think we could keep talking about this
Yep.
... tonight for another two hours, and it's not getting anywhere.
I agree. I am done.
I'm not saying it's not getting anywhere, but it's not going to get us anywhere. We have to have this conversation with the teachers
Yep.
... with Keith, with John, with, you know, like, everybody putting their heads together to figure this out. We are not going to, we are the furthest
Correct.
... from the students.
Correct.
So unless we're all sitting in a room, whatever we wax prophetic about here is not going to, you know...
I agree.
I think the frustration that a lot of us feel is, we, we have been talking about this for a couple of years, and we thought it was under control. So that's why this massive frantic effort now, you know? I mean, every time this has come up in the last year or so, oh, no, we've got loners, oh, no, we've got these access points, and now all of a sudden, there is no access points, there are no loners, we have 75 to 80 kids in both of our buildings that can't do their homework, like, not okay.
I want to add something to that. The, the committee wrote a new homework policy.
Right.
That new homework policy had, homework can be given out on the computer. Any homework that's given out on the computer has to have anonymous hard copy on the teacher's desk that anybody can take home for whatever reason. And that was rejected. That was rejected by the administration. Scott went to his administrative team, that was rejected. I don't know why, still don't know why.
So this is why I think, but wait, hold on, but wait. I, I kind of want to stop this conversation at this point
Yep, that's fine.
... because I think the conversation has to happen with the teachers in the room, with Keith in the room, with some of the administrators in the room
I agree.
So that they can go back, bring the information to us, and we can have more of a dialogue about this. Us talking about it in isolation isn't going to get us anywhere on this particular topic.
I agree.
We have to find out more about what the teachers are seeing in their classrooms. I mean, they must be seeing the impact of this, and they must have ideas as to how we can address this.
If I could just give a really quick, like, student standpoint
Sure.
... on this issue, I would definitely agree with Mark's idea of opening a room after school for some homework or something. A lot of times when I go to do NHS tutoring at the library, like, I observe, it's very, very packed, a lot of the computers are, just have students in them, and the Wi-Fi isn't, like, super great there either, so...
What time of day is that?
It's after-school.
The afternoon.
Yeah, so most of, like, the students coming to do their homework there are usually pretty cramped, there's not often a lot of tables to work at.
The weekend, what about weekends?
I have been there on the weekends. But I think a good solution to that would be to, like, open a room after school, like the media center or something. It's also already open, Period A, or I think you meant Period A.
Oh, it is. Period, yep, the first period.
Yeah, first period. Well, we can call it Period A.
Oh, I see.
But, yeah, students can come in early
They can, okay.
Can I just ask a really bizarre question? I find that for years, like, my kids have been coming home saying they're doing Study Island at school, we have carts full of computers, sometimes they're damaged, sometimes they're not, but there is a budget that we've put into for technology. Why are those carts kind of sacred, that we're not willing to allow those machines to go out where they're needed? I mean, I understand that teachers want to be able to use them, and that we do need them for standardized testing, unfortunately, but I don't see how that takes precedence over a student who has no access.
We haven't been able to, we've only had enough in our budget to replace existing machines, and we haven't expanded the number of machines, machines we've had in the school district.
No, but Michelle is asking, why can't some of those machines also function as loners?
If we, well, at...
That come back the next morning?
I mean, we might... I mean, we might be taking them out of commission for class use, which means we risk, one, not being able to replace those machines if they're damaged, as loners.
But that's not the real reason. The real reason is the folks who don't have machines at home don't have Wi-Fi at home. That's the real reason.
But it'd be a lot cheaper, but it's a lot cheaper to get those, those things are like 30 bucks a pop, and those are things you could potentially go to, you know, a PTO or Ed Foundation to get help with.
Wait, the Wi-Fi?
Yeah, the little-
No, that's 30 a month.
Yeah.
A month.
They're monthly, a month. That's the problem. This is very, very complicated. I don't want to drag it out anymore. I'm mostly just so frustrated by this and how much time we've spent. And by the way, it was Anne's suggestion, not mine, I'm just bringing it forward, to, to open the school more. I have to say that when you evaluate all of this and go over the numbers and our budgets and whatever we could possibly do, I don't see any other way than opening the school more, frankly.
Okay, so Scott, we have this meeting, when? First week of January?
January 14th, is the intention.
Okay, so the job I'm going to give everybody at this table, including the students, is before then, email both Scott and myself with any and all suggestions, no matter how, or anybody at home, hi, email us. Our email addresses are on the website. Whatever ideas you have, bring them forward, no matter how many, how silly you think they might be. If you have any ideas of funding sources, you find a grant, you find whatever. Like, part of my frustration with the, we don't have the money, is I don't think we ever properly assessed the extent of the problem, and we were kind of pacified that the problem was under control. And now, not only is the problem not under control, but it's way worse than we thought it was. So-
In our defense, though-
We've got to act.
We have been asking.
You know, I'm, we're good, yeah.
Can I ask a question, though?
Yeah, of course.
Just wondering where we stand now with what the actual policy is going to be, just kind of the interim directive that's been given to teachers in all the buildings-
I have not given a directive, and we have tabled the policy changes until after this committee meets.
Right, I mean, and we've got the few days before break and the few days when we come back, and I'm hoping, you know, sooner rather than later, we'll have some suggestions.
I'm sorry, but we did talk about the paper copies being, of, of homework assignments being made available. And I understand that maybe that's not being done, but what happened to that? Because that's what we were told was happening.
Well, there's a directive that's still out there. I was going to reiterate it, and I was actually going to go one step further and have the middle school shut down its use of technology for homework at all. I can discuss this more at the committee meeting, but the leadership team did have its own say about the policy language and had concerns about it potentially-
Making copies-
We're going to have, we're going to have to find a way to get everybody on the same page.
I agree.
So-
I guess my question is, so between now and, I know it's only maybe, I don't know, 10 actual school days between now and January 14th, but until then, we acknowledge that there are kids that are just not able to do their homework, and it's okay? That they are still, teachers are still allowed to assign-
That can't be okay.
...technology-based homework and-
It's not okay, but even if we give some directive, it does, everybody can't flip their, right, it can't flip their, you know, lesson plans, it can't flip, you know, everything on a dime.
If I could just say, there, oh, go ahead. I mean, there are some, it would be great if teachers could be encouraged, in the obvious, easy cases, to do this. For example, when teachers put PDFs of a textbook online, it would be helpful, that, that's not sort of a unique online experience that can't be mimicked, you know, in a paper copy. I understand that if you're doing interactive experience, how do you make a paper copy of that?
Well, but I think what Scott said is, the directive was already put out there, and it, but it's, I mean, we're not going to be able to enforce it in the next two weeks of school.
Could there be any encouragement? I mean, literally, like, my kids, that's where they read it. One of my children reads his math textbook online. Could, I mean, this is not like a major curriculum change, it's just getting some paper copies.
I don't think there's any harm in me sending a parting email before winter break, no directives, just pointing out how serious an issue this is. It's a high-profile issue with the board and me right now. And giving them the, the plan ahead, so they know this is a big top, big deal for us. I mean, I have no, there's nothing wrong with me sending that email out.
Okay.
And could I just make sure, I just would like to make sure that the borough political leadership is included in this.
Yes, please.
Great point. Not, not in the internal one. I mean, we'll, we'll have separate conversations with them, but I disagree on having them involved in that. I don't want teachers and administrators to, that's an overlap that I don't, I don't think is appropriate. Well, I mean, Scott and I have talked to-
Without them being involved in talking about funding and talking about the, the big-picture problem?
But that's totally, the rest of the stuff is not pertaining to them, so we'll bring that to them.
Let's do that quickly, because we-
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
We have the library issue, you know, we, do we need more space at the library, that sort of thing? And is there, I know we've, you know, we've brought up municipal Wi-Fi before, and it's, it's a huge, heavy lift.
So again, we could spend all night talking about it. Whatever suggestions everybody has, let's centralize them. Scott and I will catalog them, and Anne and I are going to be in that meeting. We'll make sure that all those, all of those suggestions are put forward, and we'll try to come out of the room with some sort of thing that everybody can agree with.
In the meantime, though, Darcy, I'm concerned about grades. Students' grades have been affected for this smart period.
Of course, Michelle, we can't go back and, and fix what's happened in the last two years right now.
No, I understand that, but, but now that the, the problem has been seen from a distance, to the degree that it is a problem, like, it's a huge problem, many of the students didn't even take the survey. I don't know how, how that even happens, that we don't have students take the survey. I mean, they're in the building every day, so why don't we have 100?
Michelle, Michelle, we're going to, we all understand the gravity of the problem and the issue, and everybody is going to work to resolve it as quickly as possible.
But with all due respect, I don't think that we can understand the gravity of the problem entirely if we don't have-
I think we can, I think we say we got 75% of the kids to respond, and we'll add an additional 25% on top of the numbers. I mean, we assume that a similar amount of those that weren't surveyed have the same problems, and we assume it's worse than the numbers that we actually have. No one is trying to belittle this. No one is not trying to take this seriously. No one is trying to allow this to continue any longer than it already has. I think we've talked, Scott and I have already sat down and talked to Keith about it. Keith understands the urgency. He understands the urgency, even based on his own, his program, his music program, that a lot of these issues impact, you know, a lot of these equity issues impact kids' ability to participate in the music program or in the theater program or, so the understanding is there. What hasn't happened is getting everybody to the table to have everybody agree on the solution. So us or Scott giving, handing down edicts isn't going to be what fixes it. It's going to be everybody moving forward on a solution together. So that's where we're going. So, does it suck that, you know, for the week before break and the week or two maybe after break, that the same thing is going to go on? Yes. But is it going to be better to get everybody moving forward so beyond that, we can feel more confident that something is actually happening? I think that's where we need to go.
And just to be clear, this is not something that's been happening for two years. This is something that's been happening for-
Of course, it's, yeah, absolutely.
A dozen, dozen, or 15 years.
And if, we're, we are perpetually that district that's stuck in the middle. We're not the district that can afford the fancy one-to-one program, and we're not the district that is, has a high enough free and reduced lunch program to get the assistance that we need. So we're stuck right there in the middle, where we've got all the needs, increasing ESL needs, increasing, you know, we're trapped in the middle. And, you know, our teachers have to figure out how to, you know, work with students who are headed to the Ivy Leagues and students who, you know, haven't taken an AP or a, you know, honors class. It's, it's hard. We've got a lot of very difficult issues that are not easily solvable.
Can I, I'm, I know, I don't want to belabor this. I just want to ask, so would it then, this is not necessarily a directive, but a suggestion or idea, how much of this is being communicated to the student body? Like, yes, we acknowledge, we have this, we just got this, these survey results, we have this huge problem, we are going to address it when we come back from the break. In the meantime, if you are concerned about your grades being impacted by not having access, please, to encourage students to maybe talk to their teachers or teach, just so they can feel a little bit like, okay, I'm not going to, they have a voice and nothing ignored. So something in the meantime, so-
Absolutely, to encourage the students to speak up, like-
Yeah, yeah. And the teachers also, at both ends, but, yeah.
Yep.
Do you want me to address Ayu's question?
Let's not go there. Sayu, can we hold the Wi-Fi concern for now? Like, it's on the table, John, right? John, it, John knows, John's the one working on it, so.
But, Sayu, I'm going to recommend that you email me directly. Could you do that? Thank you. Don't forget.
Otherwise, we're going to be here all night. It's already 9:00. And we haven't even gotten to our agenda.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay? So, with that, we are going to move on to our committee reports. So first, we have, what do we have? Mine's mine thing. It's really weird. Yeah. Curriculum, Michelle, could you, well, you don't have anything new, so you don't really have anything to even go over.
Nope.
Okay.
There was an item on the agenda that Scott wanted to interject.
Yeah, I just want to, um-
It was number four, the resolution about the Music Theory AP. I'm sorry, Music Theory One, not AP.
So I just, I know that there was some concern at the last meeting about running a Music Theory course in the spring if we only have four students in the AP Music course. I want to echo Mr. Lassiter's thoughts about this, which I've talked to him at length about this over the last week. The intent on his part is to build up the AP Music program, and we want to build up our arts programs however we can. And the thinking is that by running the spring course, just a spring course, no commitment to the fall of next year, we can consider, we can see if we can create a feeder program into a, a larger class of AP Music students in the fall. And if we don't in, come fall of 2019, 2020, we either wouldn't run AP Music Theory, or we wouldn't run AP Music Theory, but just the elective Music Theory. In other words, just running this course in the spring as a pilot to see if we can generate interest is all we're looking to do. We're not looking to make commitments into 2019, 2020. So I would hope the board could support that.
That makes sense. That makes sense. I mean, it, it's the acknowledgement that this needs to be built up or-
Or we go to a different, in a different direction.
Okay. But, does anybody have any questions about that?
Music Theory, I mean, AP Music Theory right now is like the only high-level music course, or like, really arts course, actually, that is offered in the school, like, as an AP or honors class. So I don't think scrapping it, even if it's only four students are interested this year, we don't know what the numbers may be the next year or the following year. And we also, it's just, I don't think we need to take away the opportunity from the students to, like, pursue, like, a high level.
So this is one of the really difficult things about being a board member, is you have to weigh positives and negatives, right? You have to look at what we can and what we can't offer as a small school, as a small district. And sometimes it means we have to sacrifice some things that may benefit a small group of students, but we need to put that money towards somewhere else that's going to benefit a larger group of students. And we don't have to keep moving forward to see what's going to happen. We could look at the data going back the last, say, five years. And if we see that pattern over the last five years, that it's continually, continuously less than 10 students, it, our, our, one of our biggest roles as a board is to be fiscally responsible. We have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers in this town, to spend the money, the tax money that we collect wisely. And it gets very hard to make an argument to maintain a class, any class, for four students. So, so we'll have to respectfully disagree there. And while we see that there would absolutely be a benefit to a multitude of classes that we could offer to students, we, we simply can't offer all of them, especially when they're undersubscribed.
But that's not even what we're doing now. Actually, what we're, what we're doing now is trying to go in the opposite direction by offering this class and seeing if we can build, build up, so.
Yeah. Okay, so that's it for curriculum. If nobody else has any other questions or concerns about curriculum, we'll move on to finance with Mr. Krieger.
Yes, indeed. So we have three new bill list items, number two, three, and five. I think nothing very special there. We have a new contractor handle with CARE to do recertification of the basic program in the spring, winter and spring semesters. We have John Home doing a digital storytelling fall and spring for $7,000. That's item number, the end of item number seven. Sorry about my phone, keeps buzzing. We have approval for ESA for fiscal year 2019 with revised amounts which have gone up. We have acceptance of donation number 12 for the middle school from Home Depot of two Samsung washers and dryers with total value of just over $5,000. And then we have the-
Do we, I'm sorry, Mark. When something like that comes in, what do we do in response to thank that organization? Like, that's a massive donation, that's really cool.
Before you answer, I'll say that we are going to have a ceremony at the school-
You are.
And all board members.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, we send a thank you letter to the donor.
Awesome. Can I, I'd love to, can you get that to me for me to sign to?
We'll probably invite the press, make it a, you know, a nice big deal for that and that for us.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you kind of have to. That's a, that's a pretty big donation. That's pretty amazing. So what software company or hardware company do we talk to to put together a similar, a similar event? I'm serious, man. We're finding the money.
I used to, I used to be good friends with Steve Jobs, but those days are long gone.
Come on, Mark.
Poor guy.
Too bad Burbank isn't still around.
Apparently, everybody else on the internet has the same question. I was doing some research, Google Grants, Chromebook Grants, you know?
You're not, you're not-
Not the first, evidently, or the six million.
Well, we're going to make a really darn good case as to why it should be us, and I think we have a really good argument, so.
I think so, too. All right, let's do it.
Actually, on the topic of grants, I found one that was closed right now. Yeah, I just emailed you.
Kajit?
Yeah, Kajit, I think.
Yeah, we actually, we've been looking into that, but I'm going to take a look at your link. No, but your link might shed more light on it. But, yeah, it's on our radar.
Thank you for looking for that.
That's great, yeah.
All right, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, and I'm sorry I jumped over that so quickly. I, I was trying to move us along. So there's a donation to the high school from Richard Howard of a robotics kit valued at $1,049.99 by the High School Robotics Club, and that is new as well, which is great.
So who is that generous gentleman? Do we know?
We don't know. I don't know the name.
Do we know who that is, Linda, or how that came about?
A community member.
Oh, really?
Had a student in District 10.
Wow. That's really nice. Well, thank you, Mr. Howard. All right, wonderful.
Let's finance.
Does anybody have any questions for Mark? Nope. Okay. Seeing none...what am I doing? Oh, no, we'll go back and vote, sorry. I had a little...I just got a little discombobulated there for a second. Judy, personnel.
Yeah. Okay, we have some changes or additions. Three, we have a request for a paternity childcare leave of absence request from employee 4316. So the leave of absence will be from April 12, 2019, to June 23, and then unpaid leave from September 3, 2019, until November 28. And part of that will be covered by FMLA. Number four is a personal... No. Thank you. Number four is a leave of absence for employee 0228 from January 1 to 2019. We are striking number nine, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Scott to explain about that with the nurse. Wanted to talk about a little...
There was a certification concern issue. So we're happy with the candidate, but because of certification problems, we're going to withdraw that resolution, strike it.
So are they resolvable, or it takes that...
I'm not sure yet. That's not true yet. So we're going to continue with the using of Biata nurses, who, by the way, have been working out very well. Just clarify, we use Biata as a service to provide nursing substitutes. They have been terrific so far, nurturing, caring, good with our kids. But we've also had Ms. Leifert from Irving come to straighten up some of the paperwork that needed to be tended to. So, Darcy, I thank you for that suggestion. So the things are doing...we're going...we're doing...we're moving full steam ahead, and things are going well.
Thank you, Scott. Ten is the approval of a special ed hire for the middle school. That person is Evan Rogers Farmer. There is a correction in there. The start date should say January 17, not December. So that would be January 2019.
Evan is a graduate of Highland Park.
And a really great wrestling coach.
Yes, and he's an assistant wrestling...yep, yep.
Oh, cool.
There were lots of hugs and tears.
So he already knows a bunch of the kids. Oh, that's cool. That's really wonderful.
Let's see, we have a request for a hire of a para at Irving, Andrew Berenger. Twelve is also the recommendation to hire a fall time para at Irving Primary, Jessica Number 13 is the hire of the family school liaison position we've been talking about at the middle school, Alexa Tori. I know that she's bilingual and familiar with our community. Scott, did you have anything else to add for number 13?
No, I think I said it all. I mean, she is a parent in our community. She has experiences which we think will very much contribute to this position. She currently works for a nonprofit organization, a service, a social services organization. So we had about three...I think we had three applicants. She was by far and away Mrs. Osebea's top choice.
Okay, thank you. And then, let's see, three at the end. We have number 26, the approval of substance abuse professions, substance abuse profession specialist for the district. And 27 is for some staff development hours, and the same for 28.
So Judy, I should add, number 26 is somebody we hope will fill in some of the gap that has been remaining since we've not had a SAC.
Oh, great.
This is a municipal alliance-funded position, and I have to sincerely thank Elizabeth Asamoah for securing this grant. She was on the forefront of this.
Great. Good news.
Fantastic. Excellent.
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Judy. Does anybody have any questions for Judy on any of the personnel items?
Number 27 and 28, could you explain the split and the different rates?
Yeah, we're just having...May Lewis and Ava Coppola are our lead trainers for responsive classroom, so they're just going to be targeting training for the after-school academy that we offer.
Oh, no, I think Rob's referring to the two different rates. Why...
Oh.
Why 138.6? That doesn't make sense. Is that a mistake?
Well, let me take a closer look at this.
I think that the one hour is prep work and the other hour is the delivery of instruction.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification, Linda.
And then for...
Oh, so the prep is the prep hour?
Yeah, that makes sense.
The prep hour is more, and then the other is for the presenting? Okay.
Thank you for that.
On 28, is it 21 total hours, or is it one and one?
Yeah, 20 hours of 38, and then one hour of 65 and change.
Okay.
All right. One more question. On number 13, the liaison for the middle school, can you remind us a little bit again about what that position entails?
Sure, I'll pull up the job description, which the board approved a couple of months ago.
So the candidate's experience coming into this position, can you go a little bit more into that?
I'm sorry, Ruth, what's that?
The candidate's experience in relation to this position.
Well, there's some experiences which I...yeah, let's just say that she has experiences similar to those who she'll be...those with whom she'll be working that will make her an ideal candidate to work with the population with whom she'll be working.
Professional experience?
Yep, both professional and personal. And I'd rather leave it at that. But if you'd like, I can continue to talk about the job description itself.
Sure.
Sure. So the individual has to have a minimum of 60 college credits, a college degree is not required. We were thinking folks who were looking for paraprofessional-related positions would be applying for these jobs. We had one teacher, and then who was obviously has a college degree, and then two without college degrees applying. This individual will...I'm going to try to paraphrase some of the performance responsibilities. Work collaboratively with the school personnel to provide information that they can then take back to families who might be struggling to communicate with teachers about such things as homework, assignments that are happening in class. This individual will refer families to other agencies of which they might not be aware. This person does work for one of the agencies that she might want a place a family with. Will conduct home visits to support interventions that have been identified by the INRS team. Will also facilitate coordination of parent involvement programs that we run to try to encourage more parents to come, especially from the population that's being served, to come to our evening workshops. Will work in collaboration with the principal to collect document, review, analyze data that relates to family involvement, school events, so the individuals can help build our evening events, which are not always well-intended by parents. And then anything else that the principal wants to assign the individual for this purpose. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else to Judy, then we will move on to policies.
Okay, thank you. We are...excuse me. We're moving four policies for second reading. What that means is we're moving to adopt them. Rob Roslevich, I dropped the ball. You sent me an email about policy under D, administration of medical marijuana. All the other, A through C, are exactly the same as we've seen them several other times. Paragraph D, administration of medical marijuana, Rob correctly points out that the statute prohibits the administration of medical marijuana by smoking or in other inhaled form. I don't feel strongly about adding it to the policy, but I'm happy to do so. Does the board have a...
Yeah, I was just wondering, do we already have a...I know it's state law that already prohibits smoking on school grounds, so I was just wondering if it was like redundant to put it in there, in which case that we could just pass it as it is. But I don't know.
It's probably redundant, but I didn't...I can't imagine this is going to come up, that a parent or guardian is going to try to administer medical marijuana by inhalation to a student. I don't even know how that would happen, holding the cigarette to their lips. If we wanted to avoid any confusion, I'd be happy to put a line in there, and I could read that line out. Does anybody have a feeling about that one way or the other?
I don't.
Anybody care?
I think it's probably fine as is.
Yeah, I wouldn't touch it.
That's my feeling, too, but I did, in the last 30 seconds, add a little amendment if you...
No, I think it's probably fine as is, because I think it's already prohibited in some other way, shape, or form.
I think that's probably true. All right, thank you, though, Rob. Thank you. You were correct about the statute.
All right, so is there any...are there any other questions about any of the policies? Nope. Okay. Monique, you don't have anything on the agenda for equity and excellence, but anything you want to...
No updates for tonight. We're meeting in the new year.
All righty. Yeah, all the 2019s on the agenda are making me feel a little bit discombobulated, I have to say. All right, so that brings us to first public comment, but there is no public, so we don't have to worry about that. So we will go right to our board action items. Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction items, please?
Sure. I would like to move items one through...oh, gosh, no. Just four, one through four.
Three.
Oh, sorry, that was last week's copy.
That's three.
One through three. I had one job.
All righty. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nope. Seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, Mark, could you move the finance and facilities items, please?
Yeah, I'll move items one through 13.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I did have one just super quick question. The...I think it's $7,000 for John Hume to run his program. Does that just come out of general funds?
That's Title I.
That's Title I, I thought so, okay. And that was already earmarked in this year's budget for that? Okay, so that's not...
Correct. It's the same amount we funded last year, too.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't some new thing that we were adding on.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a second? Oh, we already did that, sorry. Linda, could you please...could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, Judy, could you please move the personnel items?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through eight. We're striking nine, moving 10 with the correction, and moving items 11 through 28.
Okay.
Nope. Yeah, so...oh, I just wouldn't say it then. Oh, okay. Oh, hold on one second, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Number seven, we are also not moving on.
We're striking seven?
That would strike, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I didn't think I had to mention that because it was crossed out, but apparently...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense. All right, so it's one through six, eight, and then 10 through 20...
Well, no, nine, yeah.
Oh, nine.
Yeah, one through six, striking seven, number eight...
Right.
Striking nine.
Striking nine, right.
Ten with the correction, and then 11 through 28.
Gotcha.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
We don't have to go over any more.
No. All right, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes, on everything except for 13.
And what is your vote on 13?
No.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes, on everything except 13.
And what is your vote on 13?
No.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Abstain.
On the whole report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Everything is a yes, except 13 is abstain.
Ms. McFadden, Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. Ann, could you please move the policy items?
Yes, I'd like to move policy item number one, compensing sub-items A through D.
Okay. What, Mark? You're not going to jump in with a second?
Seconds.
I thought you were moving things along, now you made them longer.
I'm trying. I'm trying.
Any discussion? Nope, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us to our board liaison reports. I'm assuming that this time of year, they're not going to be terribly juicy, so we'll run through them somewhat quickly.
Wendy wrote an extremely comprehensive and detailed report. Give it a love, give her a big shout out.
Nice. All right, so that's on the drive?
Yep, it's on the drive.
All right, wonderful. Michelle, do you have anything from the public information or HPTV?
Unfortunately, I have nothing.
Okay. Rob, anything from the Ed Foundation?
The Ed Foundation met in November, and actually is meeting again tomorrow night.
They are busy this time of year.
They are. Well, you know, it's the planning of fundraising time and consideration of new opportunities. Last month, Christina Nikosia made a presentation, talked about technology, technology needs, some of which we've talked about tonight, and some of which are things that she was suggesting as potential ideas for the foundation to support. So that was really fascinating, well done, and well received.
Excellent. All right. Judy, anything from Universal Access?
They are meeting tonight, and unfortunately, they did not send their minutes via email like they usually do. They're handing them out at tonight's meeting, so I do not have the minutes from last month, which also met at a conflicting night, so I have none.
Bummer. All right.
Not for lack of trying.
Is there also something from Rebecca?
Yep, there's a report from Rebecca, and I'll be attending the January 28 meeting as a visitor guest.
Great. So I don't have anything that shared services committee had one meeting like a year and a half ago, and then that seemed to have fizzled. But Scott and I kind of have our own meetings with Mayor, Mayor Gail Brill-Mittler, and the council's rep to the schools, Councilwoman Susie Wolkowitz. We haven't had a meeting in a while, so we really need to try to put something on the calendar for January if there isn't something already.
We do have a meeting scheduled for January 16th. I'll remind everybody.
Fabulous. Ruth, still bad news from CPAC. That's really...that's a bummer. I hope someone puts together the energy to resurrect that. I know it's not easy. Monique, anything from Post hoc?
They were going to meet this week and decided to wait until after the holidays, so they'll be meeting in January.
Okay. Ann, human relations.
Okay, yep, we met last week, I think it was. Is that right? We met recently, the third Wednesday of every month. Oh, I think we was put...anyway, we just met. There's nothing particular to the schools. There was a lot of discussion of the new commission that the town is, that the borough is creating. Monique, you might know more about that. Has that new commission been voted into existence yet? Or is it still...
I believe that it was on the...it was up for resolution at the last council meeting, and I think it was approved.
Okay.
But I will know more tomorrow.
Yes, there is a council meeting tomorrow night. I know...I don't know what the agenda is on the meeting, but I do know from our Human Relations Commission meeting, that there are folks planning to come to the meeting tomorrow night to discuss issues pertinent to the new commission. I think the commission was initially named Bias Free HP, but that name actually belongs to an activist group, a community group, so I think a new name will be assigned. Anyway, the commission is going to deal explicitly with issues of racial bias in Highland Park. I don't know if the commission will always be dedicated solely to policing, or if it'll be, it'll have a broader racial equity purpose. So if anybody's interested in coming out to the town council meeting tomorrow night, I can't really invite you because I'm not on the town council, but it seems like it would be a good idea for people to come out if they're interested in this issue. I know one thing that we talked about at Human Relations was the need, we have, our police chief is retiring soon, so the borough will be hiring a new police chief. And I know people on the Human Relations Commission were interested in sort of providing their thoughts to the town about what kind of police chief we wanted, what sort of values we want the new police chief to bring with him or her. So I believe people will be speaking about that at Borough Council tonight, too. So if people in the school community are interested in that issue, tomorrow night might be a good night to turn up. And that's all I got.
Yeah, I know a few students are going to come to the event, too.
That's wonderful. Monique, I didn't mean to speak for you, because I believe you're on the commission, or you may be on the commission?
No, I actually am not on the commission.
Not on the commission?
I cannot join another
Commission?
Commission or body. But I do fully support the goals of the commission if they are, if they stand the way that we think they will be.
Sure.
So, yeah, fully in support.
Did I state things mostly correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Alright, thank you, that's all I have.
And wasn't there some exciting news from Ashton?
Oh, yes, Ashton was elected or appointed, I think appointed, to be, is it president or chair of the state Human Relations Commission, which is very exciting. Yeah. So go Highland Park and go Ashton. Yes, it's wonderful.
Okay, thank you so much. Mark, anything from Board of Health?
We met on December 6th, but there was nothing of new interest regarding the schools.
Okay. Wasn't Scott coming to a meeting, or is it?
No, there was some discussion of Mike Lassiter coming, but that was, that was, didn't happen.
Okay.
It wasn't needed.
The momentum has gone out of the start time debate again?
For the moment.
Okay. Okay, Rob, anything exciting from the Green Team?
Nothing new to report today.
Nothing, okay. I have nothing from school delegate for New Jersey School Boards. That's kind of written wrong. Well, anyway, to the delegate assembly. Oh no, it's not delegate to New Jersey School Boards, sorry, I'm a little discombobulated tonight. I just checked and there isn't any information for the next delegate assembly, which is typically in May, so as soon as I know when the deadline is for submitting resolutions, I'll let everyone know, and if we have any brilliant ideas for resolutions, maybe we can put something forward. They love it when Highland Park comes with resolutions, they're just so happy. Rob, anything exciting going on with Middlesex County School Boards Association?
No, there was a meeting a week and a half ago, and at the last minute, I was unable to attend.
Yeah, I was, too. And it was about budgeting, and I felt like, Mark, we could probably go and give the presentation about budgeting, so.
Yeah, pretty close to it, especially the way they were taking it, because it was more so about the interaction between the board and the unions, and so that kind of interaction, rather than the larger budgetary issues, so.
Well, but I think a lot of districts do do it really dysfunctionally, and you know, probably don't get the proper input, and you know, so, but I think we're in pretty good shape on that, so. Okay, so that is, I'm going to do this, sit here, and, sure, right here, okay. So for my president's report, I wanted to, I think I'm going to take this off of here. Let Scott take my mic off the stand. It feels a little weird, it feels like I should be like some kind of crooner.
Just don't start singing.
Yeah, don't feel like standing up. Don't worry, I will not start singing. There's no worries about that. So I wanted to talk a little bit about something that's, we've certainly discussed over the last couple of years, since the district has really tried to put this focus on Equity and Excellence. And it's an organization called Schools of Opportunity. Came back on my radar just in the last couple of weeks, because they just announced their schools for 2017. I think this is the third or fourth year that they've named schools across the country, Schools of Opportunity. And the work that they do really dovetails amazingly with the work that we're trying to do. And as we've talked about different pieces of the equity work that the board and the district is working on, I feel sometimes we run into, you know, these little pockets of resistance of, you know, that we're going off in some weird direction, or we're experimenting on kids, or we're doing things that don't have any, you know, structure or base of research. And I wanted to just take a little bit of time tonight and kind of dispel a little bit of that. Not only are these initiatives that we're undertaking not, you know, things that we've pulled out of a hat somewhere, they're actually part of a larger picture that's being implemented in schools around the country. And a lot of these initiatives are being researched by universities and professors around the country. We're not looking to experiment on anyone's kids. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time tonight talking about the Schools of Opportunity and what it is. So the Schools of Opportunity is a project of the National Education Policy Center, which I believe is of the University of Colorado. And one of the folks there who does this work is also someone who works very closely with my executive director of the Network for Public Education, Carol Burris, because as we've talked about a few times before, she's done this work herself when she was a principal of a high school in New York. So she's actually part of the Schools of Opportunity project as well. So the idea behind the project is, very often, schools that get recognized as quote-unquote "good schools" are schools where they just happen to have this socio and economic, you know, homogeneity of all kids, who have a lot of opportunities at home. And not for nothing, but that makes it a lot easier to get a whole group of really stellar students that get really high scores on all kinds of metrics. So they put this project together not only to recognize schools that have to do things a little bit differently, and maybe have to work a little bit harder to get those outcomes, but to, you know, to recognize the work that they're doing, but also to provide that framework of how that work can be done. So let's see. And this is what really caught my eye the other day, is they put out a video about the work, why you do the work, and just get your tissues. That's all I'm going to say. And hopefully the sound is not going to be horrible. Oh, no. Hopefully sound's going to work. Education. There we go. Alright, here we go. Now we have sound. You shouldn't need rich parents to get an education in this country.
Without CISA High, I don't think I would be the person I would be today. I usually average like a 3.0 or above. Sophomore year when I started getting suspended, it went down to a 2.2. And once they started talking about colleges and transcripts, I looked at them, but I couldn't really go nowhere. Students like DeShawn, they come in, home life isn't the ideal home life that a lot of educators, a lot of adults think of. Mom has strokes, she has four strokes. I can't stop strokes, so it's like, what can I do? And all she was always talking about was just graduate.
The Schools of Opportunity Project is particularly targeting the opportunity gap, We recognize Seaside High School as a gold school of opportunity this year, because they were exemplary in three different practices. Culturally relevant curriculum, classes and courses that engage kids in learning, and a rigorous, well-rounded curriculum for all of their students. When you see the kids playing with robots, it's not just one sector or one section of the group of students, it's all of them.
Ms. Brown, I'm really glad that she's my teacher, and I'm about to cry right now. Yeah, she's always been there for me, no matter what.
When students come to us, the most important thing we need to do is connect with them. Ms. Moran, he always said I'd be a role model leader. Hearing that a lot, knowing that I had the potential to do that, made me turn around. Really proud of DeShawn, because with the supports we had here, he's able to turn things around, and now he's a leader on our campus. That'll give me opportunities to get my work done and help me out with my tasks, because that's what I was really struggling on.
We have a responsibility to try and ensure that all kids have a shot. These schools give me hope that even in challenging economic situations, there are people fighting and trying to do right by kids.
So I've watched it a few times, so I'm ahead of you guys, I can watch it without getting all, uh, thank you. You tab me back to where we were? Because I don't know how to work your computer. There we go. So I think that really nicely encapsulates what we're trying to do. And he said it so plainly, when I started getting suspended, that was it. Like, you disconnected me from the school. And it took his teachers and people to bring him back in, and to give him the supports that he needed, and to be told that he could be a leader, and to be told that he could go to college, or he could go on to something else, because he wasn't seeing it for himself. That's what we're all here for, you know? I know that's why we're all sitting at this table two nights a week, and going to committee meetings, and doing all the other work we're doing. So this is the framework through which the Schools of Opportunity Project evaluates schools. And again, I wanted to share this tonight, I don't want to go into it, you know, completely in-depth, because, you know, we've all been here for a long time, but we'll put this up on the website, anybody at home or board members can take a look at it. There's links in the presentation to Schools of Opportunity, to the video, to whatever, so people can explore that on their own. But I wanted people to see that within this framework that they're using to evaluate schools, you'll find just about everything that we're doing. You'll find just about everything that came up in our strategic plan, before anybody had any idea of what Schools of Opportunity was, or what those pieces are in a successful school that has a diverse population like ours. Our community knew it, I think, kind of intrinsically. These are the areas that we gravitated towards, and they're all in this framework. If you look through any of these areas, if you go on to the Schools of Opportunity website, they break down each of these 10 categories, and there's actually a rubric for each of those categories, where you can be rated as exemplary, or I don't remember what the exact four categories are, but, you know, we all like a nice solid rubric. But it tells you what you need to be doing to be recognized as a school of opportunity. So you can be recognized either as a gold school or a silver school, and I'm not saying, you know, that this needs to be something we need to accomplish next year, or two years from now, or three years from now. I think it would certainly be a target to head towards, and a framework that we could use to help us get there, especially as next year, I think as early as next year, we're going to need to revisit our strategic plan. And as we revise those goals, we can really look at where our strategic plan goals already overlap with the Schools of Opportunity framework, and then kind of hone in on those that we would need to hone in on. And, I mean, I think this would be a pretty stellar thing to accomplish within the next few years. So I went and I looked at some of the criterion, these are on both Criterion One and Criterion Two, which are the two that you have to accomplish to even be considered, and just highlighted a couple of the things that show, you know, these are the things that we're already trying to do. Evidence submitted, in submitted documents shows that the school has little or no formal or informal tracking or ability grouping, with zero tracking in some academic areas. The school has eliminated low-track classes. The school allows any student who wants to take honors IB and AP courses to do so and provide supports as needed. So I feel like sometimes we mention these things, and it sounds like this revolutionary insane, what do you mean, there'd be no barriers? What do you mean, you wouldn't need teacher recommendations? No, schools do this. It does happen, it does work, it does help get kids to places that they wouldn't ordinarily go if you put those barriers in front of them. Something else for Criterion One. Evidence shows that a substantial amount of innovation, project-based learning in a range of subjects grounded in the interests, knowledge, and experiences of students. This is something where you've been working on since you came here, bringing more project-based learning into all levels of, into all four levels of our schools. And then a couple more examples from Criterion Two. Clear policy systems and practices for reporting, investigating, and addressing such instances, so this is talking about bullying. Instances are in place and equally enacted. Such policies and practices attend to students' social, emotional well-being and to improving systems to prevent future incidents. So over the last, what, year and a half, we've really worked to like refine and work on our bullying practices, and to try to get this into a more structured, into a more better, into, into a more better, into a better place. Whoop, what happened? Oh, was that the last one? I thought I missed one. Anyway, so that gives you an idea of what the Schools of Opportunity Project is, how it aligns with the work that we're already trying to do, and how hopefully this will give us a framework for moving forward. Now I'll put my thing back.
I really appreciate you making this presentation, and I'm all in. I think it's fantastic, and I think we should definitely be looking at it when we hit the next version of the strategic plan. A whole series of goals is, like you said, aligned to this. Why not align it even more closely?
That's exciting, thank you. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions, or?
I guess my thought is I'm excited about it, and I think we should incorporate it into our Equity and Excellence meeting, too, to look at, you know, how, of course, this is clearly the work that we're intending to do, so really just figure out how to position ourselves, and what we need to do as a committee to see that through, and
Right, and again
Find loopholes, and, yeah.
And like we were talking about earlier, in terms of the technology and trying to make that more equitable, we have to broaden it from the board table, even from our committee meetings, over the next couple of years, having these conversations as we're in the community. So I think it's crucial in the next year, and we've talked about this, bye guys, goodnight.
Bye students.
Goodnight.
Holding some kind of forum, you know? We have access to people who have done this in their schools. Parents and teachers and community members who have concerns about this have to see that we're not just a bunch of loons who are proposing something that has no basis in research, and it hasn't been shown to be effective in other places. You know, we're not looking to go down some untraveled, uncharted path. So I want to bring some of these folks here who can talk about how they've done it, and what the outcomes have been, what they've seen, what they've, you know, experienced, not just, you know, for individual students, but for their schools as a whole. And, you know, I'll take it one step further and try not to get, you know, two in the weeds, but it very much, to me, dovetails with what Ann was just talking about, in terms of what they were talking about, the Human Relations Committee, with the borough and the hiring of a new chief, and this kind of change of focus and change of direction that the district is trying to take. I think we need to help and encourage the borough to take that same turn. And it's a really hard turn to take, because it does, I mean, even in showing the video, it gets a little anxiety provoking, because they talk about, you know, part of the problem, you know, for changing cultures and to create these Schools of Opportunities is not only access, but it's racism. And that's this like scary word to confront. And, you know, when I was first on the board, and I would start to talk about wanting to look at the discipline data in a different way, people said I was trying to call them racist, which I thought was really strange, because that's not what I was trying to do. I was just trying to look at data. Like, let's just look at who we're suspending. Let's just look at if we're suspending the same kids at the same rates. Are we suspending them the same way for the same offenses? Are we? And now we look at that. Now we're just looking at that as a board automatically, like, you know, that's just part of what we do on a monthly basis, which is fantastic, because now we can actually see what it is we're looking at. So, and when we talk about racism, it's not just pointing at someone and calling them a racist, it's how structures are put in place and perpetuated, and we just don't even think about them anymore. That's just the way things are. But why are they that way? And could they be a different way? And would it be okay if it was a different way? So, you know, I certainly want to have conversations, and I'm glad it came up in Human Relations that there's, you know, going to be a new chief and a hiring process. There was a meeting last week of the Bias Free HP group, and Councilman Fine actually came to that, and he put that out into the room, that there was going to be a new chief in hiring, and that there should be community involvement there, and I applauded him for putting that on the table, because I think that's really important. And what I said at that meeting is, you know, I think this is equivalent to the school board's responsibility in hiring a superintendent. That person is going to guide the next, I mean, superintendents tend not to stay around as long as chiefs, other than when, you know, you have someone like Dr. Taylor who lives in the community. But, you know, a chief can be there 10, 15, 20, I mean, they can be there a long time. So, you know, this position is going to be really important. I mean, this is just as important, if not more important, than the district hiring a superintendent. And that session I went to at workshop, where I heard from that police chief in Gloucester Township, it really allowed me to see that there's a different way. There are, there are police stations that work differently. There are police chiefs that approach this work in a different way. And it was just such an eye-opener to me, that the prosecutor that sat in that meeting was an assistant prosecutor in Middlesex County. He's the guy that our kids go to. He's the guy who handles the juvenile cases, and he sat there and said, "I don't want to see your kids. You guys, this is something you should be able to do." And he gave him kind of, you know, maybe not so, you know, couthe example, but he's like, you know, "If you can come up with programs for, you know, kids who are blind and kids who are deaf, you should be able to come up with programs for kids who have these kinds of problems." And he's not wrong, you know? I mean, that's part of our responsibility, is to create programs for all kinds of kids. And one of the kinds of kids we're going to have to deal with are kids that have behavior challenges. And as they get older, those behaviors get more disruptive and more difficult, and the answer is not sending them out of school or sending them to the police station. Those aren't the answers. Those are not the answers that school districts should come up with.
We're separating them.
We're separating.
We're separating them.
Right, exactly.
Creating programs, but not separate entities.
Right.
Programs that are
And one of the, one of the areas on the Schools of Opportunity is about how, is about special education and access. So, I mean, those are all going to be important pieces for us to keep pushing on. So, thank you for indulging me in that, and if anybody has any questions about it moving forward, feel free to.
I wanted to talk about the part that is culturally competent, I guess they called it culturally relevant curriculum?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, in a lot of ways, I find that, like, having high schoolers, I'm seeing things that are very much not culturally relevant to my kids. And I don't think that my kids are, you know, an anomaly. I just, I feel like a lot of what they're doing is like questioning, why do we have to learn this? And, you know, I feel like that's a big piece of what they were talking about there with the culturally relevant curriculum. So, you know, if I hear that in my own home, I feel like that's got to be a part of everyone's conversations, and, you know, me and my husband are college educated with advanced degrees, so if my kids are feeling it, I'm sure a lot of kids are feeling it. And there was a really good presentation at workshop, the music curriculum that Steve Van Zant had put forward, and I thought that that was a really good example of like a culturally relevant way to introduce lots of different topics.
Who knew we'd be looking at Steve Van Zant for curriculum?
Right? Never judge a book by its cover.
What a world.
Never judge a book by its cover. So, yeah, I mean, I So, yeah, I mean, I'm really excited about that part, and I want to learn more about that, and I hope that we can also put that on our committee agenda.
Awesome. Okay. Anybody else have any other thoughts? Okay, so we will move on to old business. The board calendar, did that get, did you get a response?
Yeah, there was, everything seems to check out. Ruth, I just wanted to be sure that this, the second night of Sukkot wouldn't be a problem, as far as you know. Second night, because there is one board meeting.
Well, I just won't be able to come.
On Sukkot?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the religious part of the holiday, but
And otherwise, there was a meeting that comes right after Shufu Ote, but it's the day after.
So that's also two days?
Right, Erev, and then the second day's a Sunday, and then the next day's our Monday night board meeting. So I think we're clear. It's just the Sukkot. That's a rough period of time, so I don't know when we would get a meeting, and otherwise.
We can do it in the, I'm sorry, in the Sukkah.
We could just, that's right. But otherwise, good. So if you're ready to approve it, I think we have to have a motion, no?
Yep. So we're not worried about the date in Sukkot? Okay.
As long as you won't miss me too much, it's all right.
Alrighty. Okay, so do we just make a motion to adopt the annual board calendar for 2019? Yep. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Who did what?
Who made the first motion?
Ruth and I.
No, I seconded.
Anybody moving?
Michelle.
I don't know what just happened.
Just moving things willy-nilly.
Yeah.
All right, you got people? Okay. Okay, Lynda, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simarasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?